How are you doing today?
What do you want?
Well, my name is...
I want to hear more about it.
Right here?
Right here.
Thank you. Let's try to figure it out.
Good morning, how are you? Good to see you.
How are you doing today? Good to see you.
Something which I need to have.
And back on slide.
I don't like this much.
There's no lesson in that.
There's none?
There's no lesson in that.
No lesson to us?
I've been holding on to my position as long as I can for seven years.
Good morning, everyone.
Color bland, branding looks excellent.
The meeting is now called to order. Ms. Marilyn, would you please call the row?
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
I knew I had to do it.
Mr. Arminter?
Here.
Aaronson?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Mr. Luke? Mr. Mallett? Mr. Morris? Thorns?
Here.
Mr. Temple? Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Bushlaw? Jeremy Evercorem?
Thank you very much. It's time the LSU chapter of Pershing Rifle will present the colors.
Please bow your heads and pray with me if you so choose. Father God, we thank you for this day and I thank you for this beautiful morning that we all share together, dear God. Just, I thank you for safe travels here and I pray for safe travels home. Just please bless these leaders that sit in front of us today, dear God, with your infinite strength and wisdom to make the tough decisions that they have to every day, dear God. Once again, I thank you for this morning that we all share together and in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in saying the pledge, attention salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's invocation was given by Mr. Zach Cryer, Louisiana 4-H State President, and a pledge was given by Ava Richardson, the 4-H Northwest Regional Representative.
Thank you very much, students. At this time, I'd like to recognize Dr. Lee, Vice President of Agriculture and Dean of the College of Agriculture, to introduce our 4-H students that are here with us today. Dr. Lee.
Good morning, everyone. Zach Cryer is currently the Louisiana 4-H State President. Zach is a senior at Benton High School in Benton, Louisiana. He's currently serving as the 2023 Louisiana 4-H State President. Zach has been a 4-H member since fourth grade and served in various leadership positions. A few of these positions were 4-H National Conference Delegate, Louisiana 4-H Wetlands Ambassador, and the STEM Board Member. Outside of 4-H, Zach is involved in Beta Club, National Honor Society, Student Council, and Fellowship of Christian Athletes. Zach is a two-time Louisiana Student of the Year and currently serves as the Benton High School Senior Class Valedictorian. I'm very pleased to share with you that he plans to attend LSU after graduation and enroll in the College of Agriculture. Ava Richardson is our Northwest Regional Representative. Ava is a senior at Caddo Magnet High School in Shreveport, Louisiana. She currently serves as President of the Caddo Magnet High 4-H Club and Caddo 4-H Junior 4-H Leaders. On a state level, Ava has served as Louisiana 4-H State Parliamentarian and now as Northwest Regional Representative. Ava is also a member of the 2023 Louisiana 4-H Food Challenge Winning Team and competed at the national event in Texas a few weeks ago. When not busy with 4-H activities, Ava is a member of the Caddo Magnet National Honor Society, Tri-M Music Society, and serves as the Secretary of the Caddo Magnet High School Choirs. After graduation, Ava will attend LSU and like her friend Zach will enroll in the College of Agriculture to major in food science.
Outstanding, thank you. I'll ask the students at this time to come up and say a word, please, about your 4-H experience.
It is a privilege to be standing here in front of you today. My name is Ava Richardson and I'm a senior at Caddo Parish Magnet High School and a 4-H member for my whole entire life, so pretty much since I was four, starting out as a cloverbud. My start in leadership began when I led the pledge in my school's 4-H club. After that, I continued on to lead my first demonstration on how to play Gaga Ball. I held my first office in my school club as secretary. Then I joined the Caddo 4-H Junior Leaders with my first activity being teaching a science lesson at a local pumpkin patch. During COVID, I attended my first 4-H university, competing in consumer decision-making and representing my parish as a voting delegate. In 2021, I attended my first junior leadership conference, sparking my interest in leadership further. When I went back to school after COVID and things came to a new normal, I reestablished the Caddo Magnet High 4-H Club with over forty members in our first year. Being president of my club led me to seek an office on the executive board last year as Louisiana 4-H Parliamentarian. This opened even more leadership opportunities for me, including attending the Southern Regional Team Leadership Conference in Tennessee, where I taught a roundtable on creativity and the importance of that with leadership. I attended many meetings as the Caddo 4-H Junior Leaders President, representing hundreds of youth who wanted to serve their community and be a leader. With the executive board, I helped plan our Junior Leadership Conference for 2023. I, with three other amazing leaders, helped lead a track that taught our youth how to be professional leaders in all that encompasses. I had the chance to speak in front of the Caddo Parish Commissioners and they saw the leadership potential in me, so they invited me to be Commissioner for a day, where I learned exactly what government leaders' responsibilities are for our parish. I attended the 4-H Day at the Capitol, meeting with lobbyists, representatives, and other legislators. After 4-H University 2023, I got to attend the Louisiana Farm Bureau Convention with other 4-H officers in New Orleans, and we got to meet with Senator John Kennedy and listen to him speak about the power and the future of Louisiana youth. With the support of all LSU and all of you sitting here today, youth like me have been given hundreds of opportunities to become the voice of our generation and strong leaders. I'm so thankful for that 4-H sponsor who encouraged me, the shy little girl in class, to go up and say the pledge, because that has led me here today speaking in front of you. I try to nurture that spirit in upcoming 4-H members, just like those leaders did before me all those years ago. I look forward to seeing you next fall, so I plan to attend LSU and plan to major in food science at the College of Agriculture, and I plan to be an active leader in Collegiate 4-H. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for having me here today. My name is Zach Cryer and I'm currently serving as the Louisiana 4-H President. It's an honor to be able to speak to y'all today, and it's an honor every time I get to come to campus, whether it be speaking here today, like I said, or tomorrow, we have a full day with our Bashing the Bayou event, and we get to cap it off by being recognized at the LSU game, which I don't think there's a kid in Louisiana that wouldn't be excited about that. You know, my 4-H story started off like a lot of others do, and that's with shooting sports. I stayed in shooting sports from fourth grade to around eighth grade, and at that time, as Dr. Lee mentioned, I was the Louisiana Middle School Student of the Year, but I couldn't help but notice that the high school state student of the year was Tay Moore, and now I know a lot of y'all are familiar with Tay Moore and his story, and he was the Louisiana 4-H President in his high school senior year. And to see Tay achieve that level of success both as a student and as a 4-H'er, as a state 4-H president, I knew that that's the path that I wanted to follow for my high school career. So, I got involved. I applied and was selected to be part of the Wetlands Ambassador's team and the STEM Board, and that kind of widened my horizons to be more aware of what was available at 4-H at the state level. After that, I knew my next step was to be a part of the executive board, where I served as a Northwest Regional Representative for a year, then Vice President, and I stand in front of you today as the Louisiana 4-H President. Now, my 4-H story is a testament to how unique our organization is. No two 4-Hers share the same story, and no one 4-Her's career is set in stone, sorry. Every single 4-Her has the chance to be successful in whatever they want to do, in whatever project they want to be, whether it be at the parish level, the state level, or even the national level, and that's something that I love about our organization. I've been a part of the National 4-H Conference in Washington DC and as a part of the National 4-H Congress in Atlanta. I've competed in several different competitions ranging from statewide cooking competitions to even tri-Parish pet shows. Now, 4-H has become a massive part of my life, especially over these last four years in high school, and I've been involved in a lot of other clubs and organizations, but I've never found the same level of opportunity anywhere else that I found in 4-H. And for that, I want to thank you. Without you and your constant making 4-H a priority and investing in 4-H, stories like mine, stories like Ava's, they don't happen. And so, I just want to thank you again for allowing us to further our mission of always constantly trying to make the best better. Once again, it's been an honor to speak to y'all today, and as always, go Tigers.
May I ask a question? Come back to that microphone.
Sorry about that.
How old are you?
I'm seventeen.
How old do you have to be to be governor?
I'm not sure.
You're laughing, I'm serious.
Well, thank you.
How old do you have to be to be governor of this state?
I'm not sure. I took AP Government a while back, and that's when we learned all the rules and everything like that, so I couldn't tell you, but I know my AP Government teacher's probably kicking herself right now, I'm sorry.
You need to Google that and find out, boy.
Yes, sir, I will, thank you.
All right, that's it.
Two very impressive young people, thank y'all very much. At this time, I'd like to recognize Provost Hagerty to introduce our newest distinguished Boyd Professor, Dr. Kenneth J. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very honored and pleased to introduce our newest Boyd Professor, Dr. Ken Schaefer. He'll say a few words just very briefly, but he's a humble person, so I'm going to brag on him just a little bit before he comes up. Dr. Schaefer joined LSU Physics Department in 1995 as a very promising scientist and has had a really stellar career in research, and he's a pioneer in ultra-fast laser and X-ray physics. Dr. Schaefer's research focuses on laser molecular interactions on dynamics, and that is something that Dr. Schaefer will mention has been in the news lately, and you'll come to understand why in just a moment. The scale, the time scale at which he works is absolutely incredible, it's attoseconds, and if you think of it, most of us wouldn't know what an attosecond is, so just to give you an image of that, the difference in time between the entire length of the universe and one second is the same as the difference in time between one second and an attosecond. And that's the scale at which Dr. Schaefer works, and he'll tell you just a little bit about why that's so important. So I'm so pleased to welcome Dr. Ken Schaefer, please come on up, our newest Boyd Professor.
Well, thank you for that. I'd like to begin by thanking the board for the high honor they've given me by naming me a Boyd Professor, because LSU and the College of Science are, as you know, home to many great research programs, and I'm really happy to be recognized alongside them. I'd also like to congratulate all of you on your excellent timing for awarding me this honor now. You see, as you've heard, my research centers on what is called attisecond physics, and attosecond pulses of light are the shortest pulses that have ever been made, and we use them to see some of the fastest things in nature. And it's been long been a dream to have them, and in recent years, it's become true. But back to the good timing. Two weeks ago, just after I became a Boyd Professor, three people won the Nobel Prize in Physics for Can You Believe It? Attosecond Physics. In fact, I have collaborated with two of this year's Nobel Prize laureates for over thirty years. One of them introduced me to my wife, and I have co-authored forty-eight papers with them. So, good timing, getting in just ahead of the Nobel folks. These Nobel Laureates, they're experimental scientists, but my program at LSU is theoretical. It's based on using the computers on campus at CCT and Launy to simulate how subatomic particles move, how they can produce attosecond pulses, how they can be photographed using attosecond pulses. I'm fortunate to have been at LSU the last twenty-eight years because of these investments that have been made in having world-class computing facilities. Machines matter, but people matter more. Because my research has been successful, LSU has supported expanding the ultra-fast science program, hiring three additional faculty over the last twenty years in both the physics and the chemistry departments, so that now we have the strongest program in this area in the country, and we have collaborations with researchers all over the world. And this spring, LSU will hire a new faculty member to work with us on ultra-fast devices, practical applications of the science that we are so strong in. So, it's been an incredible fall for me and my research group. What began with a Boyd Professorship, which is exciting enough, will end with my wife and I traveling to Stockholm to see our dear friends awarded their Nobel Prizes. After that, we're looking forward to doing much more exciting science for a long time to come, and I just wanted to come here and say thank you very much for your support. These Nobel laureates there are experimental scientists, but my program at LSU is theoretical. It's based on using the computers on campus at CCT and Lonnie to simulate how subatomic particles move, how they can produce attisecond pulses, how they can be photographed using attisecond pulses. I'm fortunate to have been at LSU the last twenty-eight years because of these investments that have been made in having world-class computing facilities. Machines matter, but people matter more. Because my research has been successful, LSU has supported expanding the ultra-fast science program, hiring three additional faculty over the last twenty years in both the physics and the chemistry departments, so that now we have the strongest program in this area in the country, and we have collaborations with researchers all over the world. And this spring, LSU will hire a new faculty member to work with us on ultra-fast devices, practical applications of the science that we are so strong in. So, it's been an incredible fall for me and my research group. What began with a Boyd Professorship, which is exciting enough, will end with my wife and I traveling to Stockholm to see our dear friends awarded their Nobel Prizes. After that, we're looking forward to doing much more exciting science for a long time to come, and I just wanted to come here and say thank you very much for your support.
I'd like to invite my colleagues and President Tate to join us in the front, please, Dr. Schaefer, so we can take a photo with you, if that's okay? Monique, can we arrange that?
Right up first.
Dr. Schaefer, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, again, congratulations to you. Ms. Maryland, has anyone registered for public comment?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to introduce, if you, one quick second. I brought a guest with me today, Father Don Bosco. Is this on?
No, it isn't.
Okay, sorry. I brought a guest with me from, that's teaching at the Seminary College in Covington at St. Joseph's. Father Don Bosco's from India, and he's going to take a little tour of the campus, and he's, he's here teaching, but he really does a lot with the human trafficking in India. And my wife met him over at the Governor's Mansion when Ms. Donna had the Cardinal from the Vatican in town. He was helping with that scenario, and we've become friends with him, and I know all y'all know the twins, my wife and her twin sister, was talking about the Father, Father Don, and he said, "I'm kind of trapped at the abbey. I have no car, no way to get around, I think I'm in prison." So, they said, "Well, we're going to come get you and take you to lunch." So, those two girls have been taking him all around, and he found out that I was on the board, and he was intrigued to come up to LSU and, and visit and see what all we do and all of that. And he's highly educated, he has a PhD in, from Belgium and Germany, and in professional ethics, dealing with religious side, and so he's very intrigued about the AI issue. So, Father Don's going to, Monique's got him set up with a tour, and we just want to thank you for coming and showing interest in this. Father, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blossman.
Thank you.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to recess the board meeting.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Aronson, seconded by Mr. Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, the board is in recess. At this time, Ms. Maryland, would you please call a committee in the session?
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Blossman?
Here.
The Arminter?
Here.
The Brown?
Here.
The Luke? The Morris? Tharns?
Here.
Temple?
Here.
Madam Chair, there is a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Maryland.
And that's the Agriculture and Research Committee. Ms. Warner, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased to call the committee to order. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Golden Richard and Mr. Greg Trahan to present on Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much.
Great to have y'all here. Thank you so much. Please go ahead.
Thank you for having us. We did have a presentation, but I'm, Mr. Greg Trahan, I'm Director of Economic Development in the Office of Research and Economic Development. I serve at the pleasure of the President on cybersecurity initiatives, and I also serve on the Governor's Cybersecurity Commission.
I'm Golden Richard, President, sorry, Professor of Computer Science and Director of the LSU Cyber Center.
Monique, I don't know if we have the presentation. So, next, we'll advance, next slide, please. Next slide. Thanks. I'll start here. Very quickly, what you'll see here is, this is really a timeline, what's happened over the last several years with regards to cybersecurity. Starting in really 2019, everything we were doing in cybersecurity was frankly the efforts, the individual efforts of folks like Dr. Richard and other faculty. And really, in March of 2022, we stood in front of the Louisiana Emerging Technology Center and in essence said, "We intend to become one of the best cybersecurity schools in the country." And you can see what's happened subsequently after that, and that's not an entire reflection. It's accelerating. I can tell you, I can say definitively, the conversations we're having with our state and federal industry, intelligence, defense, and security partners are unmatched. It really is accelerating very quickly. And just yesterday, we were joined by the Governor and the President, cut the ribbon in our new Security Operations Center, which is really a transformative model for security operations training in the state. And it's the kind of engagement that uses people, and place, and programs, and partners, and it's not enough to create the most technical student. We're going to expose them to really transformative experiences. We are becoming the best cybersecurity school in the country, and thank you for the leadership, and thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to pass the baton over now to Dr. Richard to tell you more about what it is that we've been doing.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So I'd like to say first, my job is one of the most interesting and fun ones that I can imagine, but the reason that we're doing cybersecurity at LSU is because cybersecurity affects literally everyone, from small businesses, butcher shops being attacked by ransomware, to individuals experiencing identity theft, to protection of critical infrastructure on a national scale. The numbers vary, seven hundred fifty thousand is just one random one that I picked, but I've seen between five hundred thousand and over a million empty slots, empty seats in cyber, waiting for some intelligent person to sit there and help solve the problems that we face. And I need more than three minutes to justify the seemingly arrogant statement that I've placed at the bottom, but I have a wide, a pretty wide insight into, you know, a really large swath of the cybersecurity schools in the United States, because I work at NSA in the summer and see these students practicing, and I'm already positive that LSU is producing the most talented and capable cybersecurity students like in the United States. If I have more than three minutes, you can ask me why. Next slide, please. Our, our students are going into six-figure salaries at, you know, really across the board, and it's not just students applying for jobs, it's literally people at National Labs, Amazon, Tesla, missile defense agencies that, whose location can't even be disclosed, are fighting over LSU students. And one of the most entertaining anecdotes that I can think of is that recently, we were at a federal job fair, where eighty federal institutions were present recruiting cybersecurity students from probably forty, fifty different schools. We were relaxing in the game room at midnight after a really long day of interacting with those agencies, and representatives from Idaho National Labs found out that LSU students were playing bocce ball in the, in the pub, and sent the recruiting team down at midnight to take resumes. So, I mean, we're truly making a difference. Next slide, please. One, one awesome thing that we're able to offer at LSU, thanks to a really generous funding package from National Science Foundation, is full-ride scholarships for people doing cyber. These are scholarships that I, and I think many of you would have loved to have had as an undergrad. Twenty-seven thousand dollars stipends with, with no work obligation, full tuition, professional development funds, meaning travel to conferences and so forth, and grad students get thirty-seven K. All of these students have a guaranteed federal job, federal or state job upon graduation. Next slide. So, one of the things we're most proud of is, you know, when I arrived in 2017, it was already on the roadmap to become one of NSA's designated Center of Academic Excellence and Cyber Operations Schools. There's been exactly one school invited to apply since 2020, that's LSU. And in 2022, after eighteen months or so of work, we were awarded the designation. The embarrassing thing is that on the draft certificate, NSA misspelled Louisiana. We told them about this and then went to Chicago and got the real one a month ago. So, th- this is an awesome opportunity for students and places LSU immediately in the top twenty cybersecurity schools in the US. Next slide, please. One of the awesome things that's come out of that, and I was present when Aisha Olagame, the PI on this grant, was, was in my lab when the phone call came. LSU was recently awarded a one-point-five-million-dollar grant from the National Security Agency to start NSA's very first cybersecurity clinic, meaning that Louisiana small businesses can ring up the clinic and have LSU cybersecurity students dispatched to help them with cybersecurity issues for free. Next slide. We're building a team, we're still looking for more people, because what started out as a concentration in, in the 2019 with roughly twenty students in it, has expanded like by an order of magnitude, and computer science is just, you know, we literally almost have students standing in the halls at this point. Next slide. Three minutes is not a lot of time. We have a portal at the LSU Cyber Center, at the very convenient URL, lsu.edu/cybersecurity, and you can find out everything that we're doing in cybersecurity there. Thank you.
Greg, anything to add?
No. We're good. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Oh.
Mr. President.
I was going to save you all for my presidential remarks, and I still may include them, but I would like to say, this group is an existence proof of what it looks like to go from really, I hope you take it the right way, a sort of fledgling to elite.
That's right.
And you did it in short order, with very, very disciplined focus to, to come to a place where you are today with those designations. There are a lot of people that say they're in the top twenty, and, you know, they're using US News and World Report, which is, well, I won't say what I really think about that, but when NSA says you're in the top twenty, you are. It's not pretend, it's not make-believe, it's not marketing, it's you can protect the people of this country. So I want to thank you all for what you have done. It's an example for everyone else that you can start from a fledgling state and move to elite state with discipline, with some support. I would like to acknowledge the legislators who supported us, I'd like to acknowledge the Governor who supported, of course, NSF and many other agencies, but it comes with talent. I want to thank the Provost for investing resources in the Engineering School for the same. Similarly, you know, our administrative team on the SOC, Ms. Lewis and others. This was a team effort, and I just really, really appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Could I make a comment?
Mr. Brown.
Yeah.
Mr. Brown, then Mr. Blossman.
Thank you.
My, okay. Are we making, as you grow your program, our program, are we making any strides and efforts to involve our other campuses in best practices and educational opportunities? Because this is, you know, such a big need for our state and our country.
I can answer in two very practical ways. The first of which is, the Student Operations Center we announced yesterday, while the first node of that network is here in Baton Rouge, the very second node will be at LSU Shreveport, so it's the Cyber Collaboratory. Subsequent nodes will open up at other campuses. So we're, we're pushing very hard, because Shreveport has been investing in cybersecurity for a while, so there's a, there's a physical component to that. The second piece is a talent piece. As Dr. Richard spoke about the Scholarship for Service, one of the things that we're very interested in doing is frankly, there just aren't enough Dr. Richard's. You just can't make cybersecurity faculty fast enough. And so as we have our masters and PhD students, one of the things we've asked NSA and NSF is, can we essentially rehire our faculty? And one of the things are our students, and what we've talked about this, can we deploy them across the LSU system now to start incorporating cybersecurity into various campuses? So growing our own.
Yeah, just to follow up, if I may add, just ten seconds. It's a really interesting development. So, the Scholarship for Service students are required to burn off state or federal service one year for each year that they're granted the scholarship, and NSF has specifically said that LSU grads can burn off their service in-state, teaching cybersecurity at our universities, which is amazing.
Excellent.
Right. I would just comment that, you know, cybersecurity is, is the utmost important to the utility world with protecting the grid, and those guys at Entergy and all across the country, the big investor-owned utilities are investing heavy in cybersecurity because of that. And I know the day at the Capitol last year, you guys had a demonstration set up. I wasn't able to go this year, I don't know if you did, had it or not, but it was very impressive on how you set up a dummy company, and you could watch the, from all over the world, just different attacks trying to get in to this business for the, I guess, our petrochemical, and it was crazy how they bounce around, you know, you'd see it come from China, and then it would go to Denver, and then from Arkansas, then get in to try to just camouflage where they're coming from, but very, very interesting, and look, it's a great program, so I'm glad we're leading the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you both so much for your time, and you can always take more than three minutes, I know the Chairman may not wish me to say that, but what you all are doing is groundbreaking. It is truly, Mr. President, as you said, a wonderful example of how the state came together with LSU, and we are supporting our entire state and what boils down to our economy by protecting Louisiana, and it's all coming straight here from LSU. So, thank you for all the work you've done and your leadership in this area and leading the nation, absolutely. If there's no other business before the committee, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second?
Second.
Without any opposition, the committee's adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much Supervisor Warner. Supervisor Brown, please convene the Academic Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Maryland, would you please call Roe for our committee?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Arminter?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
The Luke? The Mallett? The Morrow?
Here.
Tharns?
Here.
Temple?
Here.
The Williams?
Here.
And there is a quorum.
Good. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call on our Provost, Dr. Hagerty, to present the first item.
Thank you Supervisor Brown. On the full agenda, there's one item. The first agenda item is a request from LSU UNIS to establish a Certificate of General Studies, which is a thirty-hour academic offering comprised of twenty-four credit hours of general education and six credit hours of college-level electives. The certificate provides an avenue for students to meet admission requirements or prerequisites for admission to a four-year transfer institution, rather than completing a sixty-hour associate degree program. The program will be offered both online and on campus. There are no expected additional post-grad program because it will utilize courses already offered for the Associate of Arts and General Studies program. Thank you for your consideration of this item.
Thank you. Any questions? We appreciate the good work you're doing at UNIS on meeting the needs of businesses and giving students so many opportunities. Thank you. With that, we accept a motion, entertain a motion to approve.
No move.
Okay. Mr. Morrow, we've got a second. That's for Mr. Armatur. Any discussion? If not, any objection? The motion is approved. Thank you. Our next item, there are several routine business items for consideration that include a request for continued authorization of an institute, a department split, and a termination of an institute and a certificate. Provost Haggerty, would you please present those agenda items?
Yes, sir.
Consent items.
The first is a request from LSU Shreveport for continued authorization of the Red River Watershed Management Institute. The institute was established to conduct research on the Red River watershed, establish public education and outreach programs related to the wetlands in the watershed, and recommend and facilitate management alternatives for the watershed. The anticipated revenue for the next five years is approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, which is more than enough to cover anticipated costs. The Board of Regents granted initial approval in 2001 and has provided continuing approvals in 2003, eight, thirteen, and eighteen. Second item is a request from LSU Health Sciences Center, New Orleans, to terminate the Early Intervention Institute. The Human Development Center, also housed at Health Sciences, New Orleans, now completes and does all of the functions of the Early Intervention Institute, and therefore, the Early Intervention Institute is superfluous. This termination will eliminate the redundancy. Third item is a request from LSU Shreveport to split the Department of Management and Marketing into the Department of Management and Entrepreneurship and the Department of Marketing and Information Systems. In other words, essentially creating a management department and a marketing department. The current department has grown to be a very large department, much larger than any other department on campus, and this will, this realignment creates an opportunity to focus on the individual needs of the diverse faculty and also aligns it with other universities around the country in terms of how it's organized. The fourth item and the last item on the consent agenda is a request from LSU Alexandria to terminate the Certificate of Applied Science and Pharmacy Technology due to low enrollment. There are no remaining students in the program. They've all graduated as of spring 2023 because Alexandria has met its obligation to teach out the program, and so at this point Alexandria would like to terminate the program. Thank you for your consideration of the items on the consent agenda Supervisor Brown.
Thank you Provost Haggerty for bringing this before our committee. Are there any questions, comments? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Thank you. Any objections? Hearing none, and that is approved. Then we come to the motion to dismiss, to complete, adjourn our committee. So, we have a motion for...
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you. Any... Okay. Second. Good. Thank you. Hearing no objections, our committee is adjourned.
Thank you Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Aaronson, please convene the Property and Facilities Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Marilyn, would you please call the role?
Mr. Aaronson?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Damp?
Here.
Mr. Luke?
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Duslaw?
Here.
Madam Chair, there is a quorum.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, would you please present the items?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have four property items, technically five, we have a presentation. Four property items for your approval. The first is a request from LSU Alexandria to approve a land lease to the Alexandria Museum of Art, which would allow them to display a decommissioned tract military vehicle on campus. LSU A, the moniker of the generals, and they actually have a bull terrier as their mascot named Tank. This ties to the military history of central Louisiana. For those of you that are not aware of that history, the planning for the United States to enter the European theater during World War II was actually done in Louisiana, in central Louisiana, at Alexandria. Officers who participated in the maneuvers and planning strategy included Omar Bradley, Mark Clark, Dwight D. Eisenhower, Walter Kruger, Ben Lear, Leslie McNair, and George Patton. General Patton had a bull terrier, and that is what gave LSU A the idea to get their own bull terrier and name him Tank. Demonstrate the military history, the university would like to get a tract vehicle. In order to do that, you have to have a donation from the United States Army, and it has to go to a museum. They will not donate to a university. Fortunately, the LSU A Foundation does have a museum, so this proposal, our request, is to actually have that land donated...
Ms. Lewis?
To the museum for a ninety-nine-year lease.
Okay. I'm just saying, could you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, a ninety-nine-year lease of the land to the Alexandria Museum of Art so that the decommissioned military tract vehicle can be displayed on campus.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes, ma'am. How many acres?
It's actually a plot of land that is eight-hundred-and-seventy-five square feet.
Okay. Yeah.
That's some great history there to preserve that. Wonderful.
Yes, I think Chancellor Correll gave us all the history.
Yeah, we're pretty proud of the fact that the generals is our moniker and, you know, the tank, our mascot, the fact that they planned the invasion there in central Louisiana is great history for our state and our nation. Get this, we're hoping to get a tank, you know, retired tank would really be a great celebration of many of the heroes that we had in World War.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the item? Ms. Warner? Mr. Brown? Thank you very much. Any objection? The motion is approved. Ms. Lewis, would you please present the next item?
The next item is a request to change the lease of the Delta Zeta Sorority House on campus. It's basically consenting to the assignment of the house to the National Housing Corporation. This has become a frequent occurrence here at LSU with our Greek houses. The Greek organizations are establishing national housing corporations to own those houses. So, this is simply a request to approve that transfer.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the item, please? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? The motion's approved. Thank you. Ms. Lewis, would you please present the next item?
The next item involves Lolly Kemp Hospital. It is a request to proceed with construction outside of the Capitol Outlay Process for projects that are under five million dollars. That is statutorily allowed by Act 959 of 2003. Under this proposal, Lolly Kemp would be constructing two different projects. One is a new clinic building allowing them to serve approximately thirty thousand residents, and that new clinic space would have forty-two exam rooms, laboratory areas, registration areas, and nurses' working stations. It would be an upgrade to their facilities. And then the other is a request to improve their medical center entrance and remodel their canopies. The canopy for the emergency room at Lolly Kemp is too low actually for new ambulances. I'm not sure what Mr. Duslaw has in terms of ambulance height, but they don't fit well under the canopy. So, this is a request for both of those projects. With the board's approval, they will proceed forward with construction. The first project, which is the canopies, is one-point-nine-eight million, and the project for the outpatient clinic building is four-point-three-five.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the item?
No move.
Robert?
Second.
Mr. Williams, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? The motion's approved. Ms. Lewis, would you please present the next item?
The next item is a technical cleanup of a previous resolution from this board. In 2016, the board authorized the acquisition of non-state-owned land surrounding the LSU Health Science Center in New Orleans. These different parcels would be acquired as they came on the market. At the time, there was, there were several parcels that were available, and over the years, new parcels have become available. There is now a parcel or two of parcels available that would allow for purchase by LSU Health Science, New Orleans, but the resolution that was adopted in 2016 was actually adopted in the president's name and not simply saying the president of LSU is authorized to proceed. So, we are asking for an amendment to that resolution to simply say the president of LSU is authorized to proceed with the purchase as opposed to the prior resolution that designated a particular president to make that purchase.
Has a purchase been made?
No, there was, I think, one purchase, but new properties or the existing properties are still there, and so LSU Health Science, New Orleans would be proceeding with purchasing that land. And Chancellor Nelson is here if there are questions specific to a particular property, but I think there were five properties at the time.
What's the purchase price and how, and how will it be funded?
So, the purchase price will be funded from restricted funds of LSU Health Science, New Orleans, and the purchase price is based upon an appraised value. We're required to have an appraisal of the property before making a purchase.
Any idea what...
We have the appraisals from the last time. One property was valued at two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, one was forty-two thousand, and one was a hundred-and-fifteen thousand, but those are old appraisal prices.
Is that for planned use or is it to have for future use?
So, some of it is to improve campus security around the campus. Other plans are for future academic buildings and improvements consistent with the master plan.
Any additional questions? Is there a motion to approve the item?
No move.
Second.
Mr. Williams, Mr. Damp, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? The motion is approved. Ms. Lewis, would you please present our presentation?
So, our last item follows the tour that most of you participated in yesterday of our utilities modernization. Centrio has provided us with updates on where things stand across the project, and because our general counsel is a repressed engineer, he would be thrilled to make the presentation, so I'm turning it over to him.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Jalen, if we could advance to, advance, advance one more. Most of you were at the tour yesterday, so I'm going to be brief. Where we are today is the Highland Plant has basically been completely rebuilt. That plant has gone from nineteen-hundred tons of chilled water to nine-thousand-nine-hundred tons of chilled water, which is really important. Jalen, will you advance one more? What that does is that allows the Highland Plant to create redundancy in our chilled water loop. So, as we upgrade the main plant by the stadium, we actually have extra capacity to keep the plant, to keep the campus cool while we're decommissioning and installing new equipment down at the stadium. If you, advance one more, Jalen. All the construction you see around campus is, the digging up of streets is to replace the piping. We've increased the capacity to generate chilled water, but we've never really upgraded the capacity to move the chilled water around campus. So, all at the same time, we've dug up tons and tons and tons of pipe to replace with larger pipe. So, now, both of our plants will be able to supplement the chilled water loop equally. Advance one more? Actually, go one more. One more? Okay. This is, this is the important one. If you look at this chart, there's a couple of things going on. The vertical bars are the monthly construction spend. The curves are, the purple curve was the initial projected spend, and we're talking construction spend. The green curve is the updated construction spend. The red curve is actually where we've spent. And the reason the red curve stops is at the far right of the chart is where the construction schedule's complete. That's, that's the entire hundred-plus-million construction budget. What you'll see is our monthly construction spend has been almost exactly on target, and we're still on target for completion in May of 2024. For a hundred-million-dollar project of this size, that's actually really good. We had some good luck. The drought that everybody was complaining about actually allowed the tunnel construction without any delay this summer. So, we benefited from the drought in this project. We didn't have hardly any delays because of weather. So, looking at this chart, you can see we're, we're right there where the red line stops, and the red line will eventually end at the far right with the total construction budget. We're about seventy percent done. We're not out of the woods yet. There's still decommissioning equipment down by the stadium, which means whenever they decommission equipment, we have a probability of outages and problems, but by next spring, everything should be installed, and at the end of the day, we should have some redundant capacity in our chilled water. The other thing, and I mentioned to a few of y'all yesterday that why this is so important, we have a library we want, we have a science building we want, we now have the chilled water capacity to put those buildings on the loop without having to pay for extra chillers when we bring those buildings online. So, putting this infrastructure under the campus really allows us to expand the way we want.
I have a question. Approximately, what does this cost? Is this a part of a deferred maintenance process? Who?
Now, this was as part of our utilities modernization project. Think of it as two components. We contracted the operation of two plants to a private operator, and then they agreed to finance about a hundred-and-ten-million dollars in improvements to the chilled water loop and the chillers, the actual equipment that supplies the chill water. What this is, is this is seventy percent of the construction they agreed to finance has been completed.
So, we're basically getting a new system?
Not completely new, but, but mostly new, yes. We're going, some of the equipment that had life left, we're still using.
Are there any additional questions?
Yeah, I want, I guess what, I'm, because Colless and I, he asked me about it, and I wasn't sure, and did any of this fall under deferred maintenance? Not that we, I mean, because you're looking at this program, I know it's all new, but in that column of the seven-hundred-million dollars in deferred maintenance, was some of it attributed to the old chillers at all? I'm going to defer, I'm legal and part-time engineering. I'm going to defer to finance for deferred maintenance.
I'm just hoping that maybe we could chip away, killing two birds with one stone with this.
We do chip away at, at two birds with one stone in...
I wouldn't have said that if the peter lady would have been here with a banner, but I don't see it, so go ahead.
We are, we are using, this does help us with our deferred maintenance. Some of the powerhouse had serious requirements on things that needed to be improved. Winston, what's the date on the block on the powerhouse? Remember you went to find it? That building is nineteen twenty-four?
Yeah, it's like the twenties, yeah.
So, that, this does improve deferred maintenance because we are improving certain things that had to be done.
Which is in that column? Okay, good.
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, the new library and taking down the existing library is also a large portion of deferred maintenance. The changes that are being made in order for the interdisciplinary science building to come up, changes to some dairy, the dairy store and things of that nature, that also takes money off our deferred maintenance column.
Thank you.
I'd like my comment. I had the privilege to represent the board working on the development of the plans and soliciting proposals and hiring, making the selection. I was real, Centrio was a national firm, a great reputation. They handle our New Orleans facility, hospital, med school. We're a local Louisiana company, Barnhart, during the, during the construction. So, it's a real, and to see the progress following the proposed plan is very, was very good, enjoyed that. We might want to think as far as deferred maintenance, this is the... We might want to think as far as deferred maintenance, this is the, just the first phase of a potential further opportunity to improve our utilities usage. The system that we have within our buildings has leakage, so if we could correct that, it would reduce the demand for the chill water and utility costs. Also LED lighting, a lot of energy improvements that we could do to the facilities as a further phase would, would, would help our, you know, to control our costs. So anyway, that's just something for the, for us to think about and, and look forward to the opportunity to, to improve our facilities energy, energy-wise.
Well, thank you for taking that presentation for us. It was, it was quite impressive to see yesterday. It's amazing what you can learn when you actually step foot in there and to see the, the technology behind it and the fact that you pointed out, everything can be run remotely if need be and the fact that there's room for expansion. It was built and modernized with the future and expansion in mind. So it was quite impressive. So thank y'all for the opportunity to see that yesterday. There's nothing here to approve on that, but thank you for that information. Is there a motion to adjourn the committee? Ms. Brown, Ms. Werner, thank you very much. All in favor? Any objection? The committee is adjourned.
Thank you Supervisor Aronson. Supervisor Williams, please convene the athletics committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Maryland, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Aronson?
Here.
Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Jones? Boris?
Temple?
Here.
Warner?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Cameron Zohorn?
Thank you. I would first like to begin by giving an update from the athletic department. We have now gathered all of our data from the 2022-2023 academic year. I think the numbers are very positive and speaks highly to the fact that our athletic department is working very hard to ensure that we have well-rounded student athletes. We have a 3.0 overall department GPA in the athletic department. We had 127 student athletes graduate during the academic year. Thirty graduates in the fall, 68 in the spring, and 29 in the summer. Impressively, we have a, in our athletic department, across our different sports, we have a 92% graduation success rate. 92%, that's impressive. Thirteen of our teams earned a perfect 100% graduation rate. We are one of only four SEC schools to have a higher than 89% graduation rate over the last six years. We also have 264 SEC academic honor roll students, which is also an impressive feat. For the month of October, the athletic department has designated this as Commitment Month to align with the National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October. In the athletic department, this consists of a month-long educational initiative for student athletes and staff surrounding the significance of diversity, inclusion, and equity, and the prevention of sexual and domestic violence through a variety of developmental and service opportunities, all of which supporting personal and professional growth with, among these student athletes. To move to some of our current athletic performance, volleyball and soccer are in the middle of their seasons and battling to return to postseason play. We'll keep an eye on that and we wish them the best. Our men's golf team won its second event of the year at the Everett Buick GMC Classic in Little Rock, Arkansas last weekend. Women's golf finished first place at the Illini Women's Invitational in Illinois. Men's basketball added a top-10 transfer portal class and their opening game will be on November 6th against Mississippi Valley State. LSU baseball has begun fall practice and the Tigers have added the number-three recruiting class in the country to assist with a number of returnees from last year's national championship team. For the first time in school history, the women's basketball program is ranked number one in the preseason polls. We're returning All-American Angel Reese and the number-one recruiting class in the country along with the top two transfers in the country, Haley Van Lith and Anissa Morrow. Both Tigers will open their season on November 6th against Colorado in Las Vegas in a nationally televised game. And finally, to the event for the weekend, football is preparing for its homecoming contest against Army. These two teams have never played in Tiger Stadium and have only played once before in 1931 at West Point. Our head football coach will be pursuing his 300th career win on Saturday and he remains the winningest active coach in college football. Quarterback Jayden Daniels recently became the first quarterback in LSU history with 5,000 passing yards and 1,000 rushing yards in a career. He is among the favorites for the Heisman Trophy and along with Malik Neighbors, they both were recently named to the mid-season AP All-American Team. Speaking of our context, contest with Army, the chairman of the board and I invited to join us today Lieutenant Colonel Roderick Rico Alvendia. Lieutenant Colonel Alvendia, retired, is a member of the Board of Visitors of the United States Military Academy at West Point. He's a, he's, he's, has our position for West Point. The West Point Board, unlike our board that is appointed entirely by the governor, the, the West Point Board is, consists of eight members of Congress, four senators, and four members of the House, and then six people appointed by the President of the United States. And Lieutenant Colonel Alvendia was appointed by President Joe Biden to the Board of Visitors for West Point. But I want to talk for a second about Colonel Alvendia's commitment to his country beyond his service on the West Point Board. He served honorably in the United States Army and was deployed in the Louisiana National Guard to go to Iraq. I'll never forget that I got, received a call from Lieutenant Colonel Alvendia on a Sunday afternoon in 2005 before Hurricane Katrina hit. And I said, hey, man, how, where are you? He says, I'm in Baghdad. And I said, whoa. That's serious. But while he was in Baghdad, he earned the Bronze Star because he was part of a team that, that prosecuted insurgents and he was part of the first successful prosecution of an Iraqi for the murder of a US soldier. We, we are honored to have West Point here. I think LSU has really rolled out the red carpet for this historic event and the chairman of the board thought it was important to take this opportunity to welcome a Louisiana member of the Board of West Point, Lieutenant Colonel Alvendia. So welcome.
Thank you, James. Thank you for that warm welcome, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, members of the board. I recognize many of the legendary attorneys here from Louisiana, Glenn Armentor, Mr. Morrow, my law school classmate, Remi Wasen, Robert Dampf, one of the best mediators in the state, Winston DeQueer. Thank you for having us and on behalf of the.
What about me?
Oh. On behalf of United States Military Academy Board of Visitors, General Gillen, all the cadets of West Point, thank you for your hospitality. Thank you for welcoming us. I will tell you that when I was appointed by the president to be on the Board of West Point, my wife, soon-to-be-wife, who is a LSU grad 2011 from your master's program, said, well, can he help you get on the LSU board? I said, no, but that's not how it works. That's not, that's not how it works. I'm on West Point Board, president. But she, we actually had a, a, a moment this morning when I said, listen, we're going to LSU to speak to the Board of Governors. She said, well, look what I'm wearing. And she had purple and gold. And I said, wait a second, we're black and gold. And so we had a bit of a, an argument there and she, she, she met in the middle and wore maroon today. I think that's when you get when you mix the colors together. But sir, but I do want to thank you for your warm hospitality. Monique Kane was very instrumental in welcoming us, setting up everything. Brittany Ernest, who's with LSU Alumni Association, was kind enough to send us parking passes and all kinds of other things. But the one thing I couldn't understand she sent me was this Beat Army sticker. I'm not sure why she included that in the envelope, but I wa- I wanted to remind her now, we did meet in 1930 and we won at that point. But times are different these days, but in the famous words of Coach Prime, beat us now. Beat us now. There will be a rematch again in the future. The last thing I will say is, look, the one common denominator that every university, every person across the country has is patriotism. Everybody has a common denominator, US military. I was talking to the kind chancellor here earlier and her father served in the military in combat, her grandfather served in the military in combat, and it just goes across the board. I deployed in 2004, as James said, with the Louisiana Tiger Brigade, which actually got their name Tiger Brigade. At the same time, LSU got its name, the LSU Tigers in that era. So we have a common thread there that goes through that. And James is right, we've been friends for 20 years. I will tell you, you're very lucky to have this gentleman on your board who is a true patriot, a service to our community. So thank you, James, for inviting me here today to speak. I do have, from, straight from the US Military Academy Board of Visitors, I have a board pins for, that I wanted to present to President Tate, Chairman of the Board, incoming Chairman of Board, James Williams, Monique. And I wanted to give, I saw the Pershing rifles here early, I wanted to give your battalion commander of the ROTC program here at LSU, I wanted to give him my pin from LA, from United States Military Academy. You become a cadet, Cadet Lanning. And for those of you, I'm sure you know this, he will be commissioned as an officer in the United States Army. He will serve alongside West Point cadets who also graduated from West Point. Same leadership, same abilities, but he would have graduated from LSU. So thank you, Cadet.
I'd like to give you our flash, the old war school flash from LSU, which we got at the same time we got the LSU Tigers.
Thank you. Thank you, Cadet. Thank y'all very much. Go Army. Thank you for, thank you really, truly. It's an honor to be here. We appreciate your hospitality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'd like to take a picture, Lieutenant Colonel.
And as a reminder to our colleagues, we do have, the chairman has put together a tailgate tomorrow, joint tailgate between our board and members and officials and generals and all that from the United States Military Academy. That's going to, Monique, what time is that tomorrow?
2:30.
All right, so 2:30 tomorrow at the LSU Foundation Building. I'm sure all those military folks are going to be on time, so we, I'm, I'm going to make sure that we're on time, we're on time as well, but thank you very much. All right. And we only have one item on the athletics committee agenda today for our consideration. At this time, I would like to recognize our athletic director, Scott Woodward, to present the item.
Mr. Chairman, members, it's a great day to be here and in the spirit of human capital and human, human beings and what we do following this great boy professor. We're here to honor and, and reward a very good, who I think is, in my opinion, the best collegiate baseball coach in America in Jay Johnson. And we're here to do that with a very competitive and very good contract. As you guys know, I really like to reward and honor our people that do the very best because that's where we can be competitive in, in human capital and what and how we do it. And I know it's to a lot of us, especially now that I'm in my 60s, it's, it's a big number, but it's something that I can promise you is competitive, fair, and, and very good for the marketplace. Head coach Jay Johnson's in his third year, obviously, with a national championship in year two. It seems to be a common theme and it's not, doesn't go unnoticed to our football coach. But it, it was a phenomenal year and a phenomenal season and I think there's more and better to come. He was obviously the Coach of the Year by Division One American Baseball Coaches Association and the Collegiate Baseball Newspaper. An incredible record of 93 and 39, SEC record of 13 players selected in the 2023 MLB Draft. Paul Skeens and Dylan Cruz were first players from the school to be selected one and two. And, and incredible accomplishment and feat. And just so you know, and I've told you guys and I want y'all to know, guess where they are in their offseason? Baton Rouge. And this is their home and they love it and they're here and they're very visible and it, it's a great thing. So not only is Jay winning at a high level, he's mentoring these young folks to appreciate their university, appreciate their community, and do the right things as far as we're concerned. The, the guts of the contract are enumerated in front of you and it, it's a, it's a very good contract. Like I said, it increases and goes up, starting the proposal at 1.2 and going all the way up to $2 million in 2030, 2029, 2030. Very good incentive postseason laden, uh, uh, contract as well as you can see in the documents where we are as far as our SEC ranked and, and proposed and current contracts. And I have a feeling that the Florida contract's going to be right there or right above us and we're, we're jumping and we're in the, not the hundreds of thousands of dollars difference, we're in the tens of thousands of dollars of difference. These national championship coaches are really stacked up there and that's where we really pressed. And Verge and Kelly did a heck of a job negotiating and as well as Dan Gaston. And here again, I think this is a very fair and competitive contract. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman of the committee, I'm here to answer and try to assist in any questions that anyone has.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions before I entertain a motion to approve the item? Mr. Starnes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank Scott Woodward for his leadership and his outstanding service as athletic director at LSU. And I want to thank him and his team, Verge, Lori, Kelly, who do an outstanding job for us. And we couldn't be happier with the way things are going under your leadership, Mr. Woodward. And I just wanted to tell you how much we appreciate it.
Thank you, Rem.
I got a quick just comment. Yeah, you did a great job on this, Scott, with your team and I like how we reward people for success and, you know, he's won a championship, he should be. for success and he's won a championship, he should be paid like a champion, so thank you for that.
No prob, thank you, Mr. Blossman, Mr. Damp.
I just wanted to echo Mr. Starnes. You've got a great team over there and it shows by the quality of the kids and the performance across the board. Appreciate how much you work at it and your team works at it and the success you've had.
Well, member Temple knows this better than anyone because he hired me one day. You always hire people smarter than you.
Now you gotta tell them that was fifty years ago.
Any other, any other questions before I entertain a motion? Mr. Armentor.
I just wanna join the chorus, we expected a lot and you've delivered a lot more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the item, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Move by Ms. Aronson, second by Mr. Zuslog. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is unanimously approved. At this time, I'd like to enter-
Chairman, can I make a comment?
Mr. Brown.
Thank you. I have a business associate that runs a national company and had an interesting conversation with him. They like to hire student athletes and, you know, I know the college degree is important, but what he said was, and I thought this would maybe be interesting to y'all, they know teamwork, leadership skills, their decision process, their discipline, their dependability, they follow plans, and they're very similar, thank you for our military people being here, very similar to hiring a military personnel in a business situation to be a leader. So I just thought that was-
Mr. Brown, that's so important and we, you know, I pound into Laurie every time I have a good one that I send over to Lipsy's, that they, on top of what you said, have the best time management skills I've ever seen in any young person. And thank you for that acknowledgement.
All right, at this, Mr. Damp.
Just one final thought, I know that Laurie, Kelly, and Verge agree with your sentiment that you hire people smarter than they are.
Absolutely.
All right. At this time, we'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the committee. Move by Ms. Aronson, second by Mr. Armentor, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, the meeting, committee's adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Williams. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to reconvene the board meeting. Move by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Armentor, any objection? Without objection, meeting will now come to order. Ms. Maryland, please call the row.
Mr. Woods.
Here.
The Morrow.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Mr. Armentor.
Here.
Aronson.
Here.
The Blossman.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Damp.
Here.
The Luke. The Mallett. The Morris.
Here.
Starnes.
Here.
Temple.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Sir Williams. Zuslog.
Here.
And there's a quorum.
Thank you. For our approval today, we have the minutes from the board meeting held on September eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. They were previously provided. Does anybody have any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So move.
Move by, move by Valencia, second by Mr. Morrow. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion is approved. We'll move on now to personnel actions. Information was previously provided. Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions as presented?
So move.
Second.
Any objections? Motion is approved. Also for our approvals today are the reports to the board for routine business items. Those reports were previously provided. Are there any questions on any of the reports? I'll entertain a motion to receive the reports as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? That motion is approved as well. Now at this time, I'll ask the faculty and staff advisors to report next on the agenda. I think Dr. Kemba J will present on behalf of the faculty advisors.
Thank you Chairman, President, and Board of Supervisors members. I would, good morning. I would like to introduce our new members, Professor Labour from LSU Alexandria and Professor Newton from Pennington Biomedical Research Center.
We ask the new members to stand up, please, as you, thank you.
And we have Professor Veloski and Professor Gro and Professor Tyrone who are continuing surveying. I would start with my report with LSU Health Sciences Center New Orleans. The foundation has received a seven point five million dollars gift from the estate of Marcia and Billy Beer. It is their largest gift in the foundation's history. Dr. Nelson and Ms. Christina South were very instrumental in securing this gift. This will provide tuition support for ten medical students for four years and the funding will be provided by the interest on that money. So that would support the student who otherwise could not have been able to afford this medical LSU Health Sciences Center New Orleans also is partnering with Louisiana Bioinformatics Company, bioinformatics experts in a funded project that will assist the development of next generation of vaccines and therapeutics against COVID- nineteen and future coronavirus pandemics. We have learned from COVID-nineteen pandemics that proactive surveillance with cutting-edge sequencing technologies essential to protect the nation from pathogens and track viral We have received a four million dollar award to continue this project and our faculty member Lucio Meal and Judy Crabtree will be working on this. Also, Dr. Mike Hegency has received a one point two billion dollar award to support his research project, improving cervical cancer prevention in Louisiana. Report from LSU Unis. The nursing faculty, staff, and students were congratulated for a successful onsite review of ACEN, which is the Accreditation Commission for Education in Nursing. Dr. Semino is in receipt of prelim report and they will receive their final confirmation in late spring of two thousand and twenty-four. In terms of faculty achievements, Dr. Mara Kaval recently published poems in Poets, Espresso Review, and Amulet. Also, Rachel Andrews was selected as the two thousand and twenty-three Louisiana Association of Health Physical Education Recreation and Dance Recreator of the Year. Also, LSU Unis has completed a re-accreditation visit by the SAC SOC team and they have no findings in his compliance with all the SAC SOC standards. The report from LSU Alexandria, there will be a holding of a celebration next week in the honor of reaching a goal of five thousand students, which is two years before the target of two thousand and twenty-five. They also had a ribbon guarding for new dental hygiene program in collaboration with LSU School of Dentistry in New Orleans. There are several programs liked by students which include aviation, cybersecurity, and In terms of faculty achievements, Dr. Christopher Stacy, a professor of history, has published a book entitled Populism and Professional Wrestling in the Sunbelt South. Beth Whittington, Associate Professor of Criminal Justice, was awarded the Debbie Smith Award from the Alexandria Bar Association. There was a sad news from the Ag Center, there was a death of a student there because of his underlying heart condition. And at this time, I would like to invite Professor Tyrone to present a report from LSU A&amp;M.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Camboje, and thank you to the board for the opportunity to present some exciting news from the A&amp;M campus. My name is Daniel Torone, I'm an Associate Professor of Political Science on that campus and I'm also Vice President of the Faculty Senate. The National Academy of Sciences is funding a five-year, twenty-two million dollar consortium co-led by LSU that will project the future evolution of the Mississippi River Delta, evaluate management strategies for the delta, and assess socionomic effects and disaster management impacts. The consortium comprising thirty-eight principal investigators and fourteen institutions is co-led by LSU in Tulane with Sam Bentley at LSU being the contact PI and will address the looming ecological and socio-economic challenges in the Mississippi River Delta region, which is a crucial hub for U.S. Commerce and a shield against hurricane surges. By fostering a diverse coastal research community and engaging stakeholders, the initiative aspires to bolster regional resilience, inform ecosystem management, and provide a blueprint for addressing complex environmentally linked challenges. LSU is leading Louisiana in artificial intelligence. At the A&amp;M campus, there will be more than forty courses taught in the spring semester that incorporate AI into the curriculum and everything from computer science to political science. Faculty staff working groups have been formed under the provost to advise him on advancing AI in research, operations, and education. Students in an honors class are developing AI for real-world application and employment, including automatic tumor staging, management of herbicide application in farmers' fields, and assisting nurses with post-procedural care. The Faculty Senate on our campus was pleased to see the results of a survey released by President Tate's office regarding Louisiana residents' perceptions of higher education. Among the most notable results were the following. Eighty-eight percent of Louisiana residents have a very favorable or somewhat favorable view of professors and faculty at LSU. Eighty-three percent agree that faculty are very successful or somewhat successful in helping students prepare for real-world jobs. Eighty-six point nine percent of respondents said that LA faculty and professors have a very favorable or somewhat favorable impact on the state. And eighty point three percent of respondents stated that LSU faculty and professors helped attract students to the state. And seventy-three point seven percent say that they helped attract business to the state. We know that our faculty are doing incredible work in the service of the state and we are very encouraged to see that our efforts are recognized by our fellow Louisianians. And finally, we'd like to recognize some examples of the excellence of our faculty, including Dr. Schaefer, who you acknowledged and recognized earlier in today's meeting. First, six faculty have recently been the recipients of National Science Foundation Career Awards, one of the most prestigious and competitive grants for early career faculty. And these include faculty in the Departments of Chemistry, Geology and Geophysics, Biological Sciences, Mechanical Engineering, Oceanography and Coastal Sciences, and Physics and Astronomy. Turning to Humanities, LSU Professor of Journalism John Hamilton was named the two thousand and twenty-three recipient of the Sidney Cobra Award for Lifetime Achievement, the highest honor bestowed by the American Journalism Historians Association. In the words of the Chair of the Selection Committee, "John Maxwell Hamilton is the type of scholar who AHJA has in mind many years ago when the Cobra Award was established. His reachers is incisive, robust, and significant, and the scope of his efforts place him in the company of the most accomplished names in our field." And finally, the excellence of teaching at LSU was also highlighted by the Association of Library and Information Sciences in recognizing Dr. Edward Benoit III, Associate Professor and Associate Director of the LSU School of Information Sciences, as their two thousand and twenty-three senior faculty recipient of their Excellence in Teaching Award. In the letters of support from LSU alumni, it was stated that Dr. Benoit created a community of students that worked to support each other's knowledge-making and provided each and every one of us with personal advice and resources to aid our growth. From internships, online coffee hours, reading lists, and case study puzzles, you name it, I was offered it. Another alumnus said, "His teaching led with compassion, allowed for students to come as they are in a safe and respectful environment." These are only a few of the numerous examples of external recognition of our faculty and we look forward to sharing additional accolades with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, Mr. President, we'll ask you to present your report.
Well, it's a special weekend here. LSU clearly, I wanna welcome our colleagues from the United States Military Academy to campus, it's very special that they're here. I hope that they're treated as all are treated when they arrive at Tiger Stadium, they should have an authentic experience, whatever that might mean. I want to highlight a couple of things because we live in a world where people create, and I alluded to it when our Boyd Professor was here, as well as other times, that we create, in my opinion, fake accomplishments. We live in a world of just participation trophies, it's just very difficult to discern in the marketplace of the academy what's real and what's not. And, you know, when you saw our colleagues come up from the cyber world and you looked at that timeline, that's real. That's a real accomplishment. And it doesn't happen very often that these things get touted because you receive a lot of noise that's really, in many respects, foolishness related to higher education. But what you saw there was a real example. I would like to give you a couple of other real examples. You know, in the news, Pennington had six professors who had a H-index greater than one hundred, the lowest was one twenty-seven. It's hard if you're not in the academy to understand what that means. But there are only six thousand professors in the world who have a one hundred H-index. That means a hundred papers cited a hundred times. So if you have a one eighty-eight, which is what one of them had, that means they had a hundred and eighty-eight papers that were cited a hundred and eighty-eight times, that's the best in the world. Like that's, that's elite, that's not make-believe, that's not U.S. News and World Report creating different models, this is for real legitimate science saving people's lives. And I don't think people really fundamentally understand, that's happening right here at LSU. When a man stands before you and says, "Thank you for being a Boyd Professor," and he said, "And my collaborators just won the Nobel Prize," people who win the Nobel Prize don't work with average people. Like they do not spend their time with regular people. You don't have time. If he tells you his research and he's going over there with them to acknowledge what they receive, that's a world-class researcher. And all the time I listen to things about LSU, people talk about nonsense. That is unbelievable. That's happening right here. So you saw an example in cyber go from fledgling to world-class in three years. That man has spent his entire career here, he could have gone anywhere in the world. That's how good he is. Those faculty members at Pennington, six of them, hundred index can go anywhere in the world, but they choose to be here. That's special. When you hear about agriculture research, top fifteen in the United States of America in terms of research expenditures, that's big time. That's not average. We spend a lot of time talking about peripheral issues. I just don't wanna do it anymore, folks. These people are getting it done. That SOC that they talked about yesterday that's connected now to Alexandria is gonna be connected all through the LSU enterprise, that's elite. It doesn't happen in average places, other states are going to call us and ask us, "How did we get that done?" If you saw the kind of research that's happening in that environment in the training function- If you saw the kind of research that's happening in that environment in the training function, that's world-class. That's going to be in our total state enterprise. It's big time. You can spend an inordinate amount of your time talking about foolishness related to LSU if you want to. I will not be party to it because there are too many world-class people breaking barriers and doing outstanding things. We had a meeting of our leadership in New Orleans. Thank you for hosting it, Dr. Nelson. Well, we're talking about how we can amplify and extend this type of world-class behavior and actions throughout our system. We believe we have a great team that can get this done. We're excited about it. I would ask you, as members of the Board of Supervisors and anybody who really cares about LSU, when you talk about LSU, find one thing that you think is, you know, a world-class deal and talk about that. Not nonsense and foolishness that happens at a high order in the regular press of the day. Because most of the time, it's not about these things. It's really shameful. I could not be more proud of the faculty at LSU. You saw our faculty reports. They were all really about their accomplishments. We could go on and on and on about how good they are. And I want to say this for the record. It's extremely important when you have this level of expertise that they be allowed without any doubts in their mind, that they should be able to articulate the things that they're finding because the world needs them. When we talk about all the AI that's happening, that's also both good, but it also creates a context in which fake information is at the ready. And if you don't have world-class researchers who can verify and make sense of the world, we're in trouble. And so I say to every faculty member who's listening, you speak your deal without any hesitation because the world needs you right now. And I thank you all, every faculty member, every staff member that supports our faculty, and all the wonderful students that we saw. And lastly, I'd like to talk about 4H. Matt, go get every 4H student that you can find and bring them to LSU because they are the future. What we saw there was unbelievable. That's the best in the business with respect to K-12 and how the education function ought to work. They need to be our new physical chemists. They need to be our politicians. Tay Moore, all the rest of them, world-class kids, care about Louisiana and bright as they can be. We need them here at LSU. And if we do that, and they're all over our system, med school, law schools, Ag, physical science, political science, and the like, this state is in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you, President Tate. We appreciate you telling us how you really feel.
I'm just, I mean, there's so much positive in so many world-class people that don't get acknowledged because we spend our time talking about people in the bottom 1%.
Totally agree. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve all committee recommendations from today's committee meetings.
So moved.
Any objection? I need to take a step back, members, and I need to call a Senate President. Staff Senate President, Mr. Duplasschain. My apology for skipping over.
That's all right, Mr. Chairman. This is my first time speaking before the board, and I thought there might be some nerves, and then you just passed right over me, so. Those went out the window about 10 minutes ago. I said this was my first time speaking before the board. I see Mr. Dampf over here talking about breaking the ice. He probably doesn't remember this, but a couple of years ago, I met him for the first time. We were backstage in the PMAC for summer commencement. And Mr. Dampf came over to me and said, "Where do you work on campus?" I said, "I work in the College of Engineering." He said, "Oh, are you a professor?" I said, "No, sir, I'm Director of Communications." He said, "Oh, I thought you were one of the smart ones." And then he walked away. So if I ever had a big head two years ago, it got deflated. So I'll be brief. In addition to the many social and team-building events that you can see from the report, staff senators are hosting for employees across the system, including the Cookie and Cupcake Socials at Pennington Biomedical Research Center, an obesity research center, mind you. I have a couple of items from the Council of Staff Advisors report I'd like to highlight. First, I want to recognize and congratulate the staff at LSU Unis who helped make the recent SACs accreditation visit a success. The SACs team left with no notes or suggestions, which is a very high achievement, if you're familiar with that process. And then secondly, on the Baton Rouge campus, myself, Faculty Senate President Anessa Baziev, interim Director of Parking and Transportation Services Director Kaylee Olds, and Associate Vice President for Campus Safety, Emergency Preparedness, and Emergency Response, Michael Antoine. We will meet this week to discuss how we can all work together to address faculty and staff concerns and questions about parking and other areas that fall under their purview as they arise. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for serving. We greatly appreciate the staff here at LSU. None of the things I talked about in my report are feasible without you and your colleagues making a difference and investing. It's very hard to measure, but it doesn't happen without you. And so I want to thank you for being part of the very fabric of this institution.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, clearly I was wrong. He was one of the smart ones.
At this time, I'll do the chair report, and I just want to open by, first of all, thanking our immediate past chair, Ms. Valencia Jones, who made this transition to the chairmanship very easy. It was an honor to follow your leadership, Madam Chair. Thank you for that. In addition to the President and his staff, it's a lot easier to sit here when you have focused leadership. We all run organizations. We understand how important that is. The momentum that we have at this institution right now, in my view, is just incredible. As I travel around the state and the nation, I see the upward... No matter where I am, the folks in it know that I'm affiliated with LSU and just get tremendous feedback all the time. And that doesn't happen by accident, and it doesn't necessarily have to do with athletics, but it's the brand in general, and I think your focus on that, Mr. President, has a lot to do with that. So I thank you and your staff for the leadership as it relates to that. At our last meeting, we were just beginning this fall semester, and now we're already passing midterms. Time is flying, and it's been a busy couple of months for myself and the fellow board members. Last meeting, we approved Dr. Kenneth Schaefer as our newest distinguished Boyd Professor, and we were delighted to introduce him in person to everyone today. Also last month, we were able to attend the President's annual year-end celebration. And again, I thank him for his leadership, achievements, and historic accomplishments that have impacted our students, faculty, staff, community, and our great state of Louisiana. Also last month, we attended a wonderful welcome reception for our Shreveport Campus Chancellor, Dr. Schmidt, along with his administrators, faculty, staff, and community members. This month, again, we participated in our Southern Association of Colleges and School Commissions on college reaccreditation luncheon for LSU Unis, where we were hosted, of course, by the great chancellor. We also attended the Cybersecurity, Security Operations Center ribbon-cutting, and a host of tours, including the renovation of some of our women's basketball team facilities, the utility modernization project that we spoke of early on Highland, and the University Rec Center. My first month or so as chairman has been filled with great experiences and continued respect of the impact research and hard work taking place within our enterprise. The closer I get to the work that's happening, Mr. President, around our campuses, it's just... This gives me a further appreciation for the work that's being done here up and down the lines. So again, I thank everyone for that. As I conclude, I look forward to seeing many of you at our December meeting, which will be held in New Orleans and hosted by Dr. Nelson and Senator Murray. That'll be in early December, so we'll welcome everybody to the Crescent City at that time. And if there's any further, no further comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Moved by Mr. Morrow. Second by Mr. Morris. Any objections? Hearing none, so audit. Thank you very much. Go Tigers!